Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, October 22, 2024. It is 4:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to bring a meeting order?
So moved.
Does that get problems in favor?
Aye.
This meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda, OPEB, PARZ, Peacock. Your matter is presented, votes may be taken. We have a whole bunch of people here to give us some information. We have a presentation in front of us. Take it away.
Good afternoon. My name is Kate Canny, and I am joined today by Treasurer Thomas O'Brien of Plymouth County, Dennis Mullins of PFM Asset Management. I'm with PARZ Public Agency Retirement Service, and my colleague Natalia Macedi is also joining us. So together, we are your, well, actually, the front face of your OPEB management team. PARZ, we have about 65 people in addition to us. And then we'll begin to tell you how many people at US Bank and PFM. But so we'll just start this. Quick overview and a reminder. We met about a year ago. I came and met with all of you, and I was here to talk to you about the Plymouth County OPEB Trust Program. That is a Section 115 Multiple Employer Retiree Benefits Trust that agencies can come together and address their retiree healthcare liabilities. It's candidly, in my opinion, one of the fastest-growing options in the New England area. We started in 2015. We're now at technically 34 members. And you're going to be saying, why technically 34? I don't count you as a member until I have all of your documents signed in my files. And we have two more members that are in the process of signing their documents this week. So ideally, 36 members. Our program provides you with a GAZB compliant option. GAZB compliant for anybody on television who doesn't understand maybe what that means. That means that the trust we are providing for you, the assets are dedicated to retiree healthcare only, that they're protected from creditors, and that the assets are irrevocable for anything but retiree healthcare-related costs. We have a private line of ruling that ensures all assets that go into the trust and come out of the trust at the appropriate time remain tax-exempt for both the agency, the town of Cushinget, and the beneficiaries, which are your retirees and your future retirees, which are your employees. So we've brought together a four-member team. We have Plymouth County and the Plymouth County Commissioners. They are our program sponsor, and they're really the driver and the heart behind this program. The Plymouth County Investment Committee. Those are, the committee is headed by Treasurer O'Brien, who serves as the chair of the committee. He is joined by four members, duly elected members, from member agencies. A member agency may only have one representative on the board. PARZ, we serve as the trust administrator and consultant. So we are an extension of Jennifer's Office as your treasurer. We manage all the day-to-day. That's everything from legal compliance, document overview, contribution management, reporting. And when it comes time that you want to take assets out of the trust, we manage the dispersment process. As trustee custodian, you have US Bank. They serve as a co-fiduciary. That is that they are maintaining that these assets are held properly and in the best interest of the beneficiary. Under state law, Jennifer is the custodian. We serve that role with her. And then PFM Asset Management are the investment advisors. And I'm going to kind of short, kind of go through this because it's just our program advantages. I really think if you look at this, the key things are that we have an all-inclusive program. So it takes the burden off the town. We provide you with very high-end thoughtful counsel, consulting. We brought together very strong investment options. And candidly, we have some of the lowest fees available. And then, as I said, 35 local governments. Obviously, one agency has signed. And so we're looking at 36 by this time next week. So this is a summary of your agency's plan. The board adopted our program on June 6, 2023. The type of plan you adopted was a Section 115 Irrevocable Benefit Trust. You selected the investment option of the Peacock Growth Portfolio. That is also the original portfolio that the program was designed. And the plan administrator, that's our point of contact here as the town. That's Jennifer, your treasurer. So your initial contribution was $100,000 made in September 2023. You've had additional contributions of $1,117,419. I'd just like to make a kind of a point that the reason these assets came in in multiple contributions is you were actually liquidating a trust, an existing asset. So those came over in sections. And that was based on not only state law, but proper timing. We would never want anybody or any agency to transfer to our program and not properly liquidate their trust assets. So your all-in total contributions are $1,217,419. Disbursements, that would be reimbursements for retiree healthcare. At this point, the town has not requested any disbursements. Disbursements can be made at any time. Your expenses, that is the all-in cost since September, actually, October 2023. We are strictly assets, fees based on assets under management. So no fees were assessed until October of 2023. And so those fees or expenses are, as of September 30, $4,680 compared to your investment earnings of $322,747. So your account balance on September 30 was $1,535,486. A lot of numbers. So a quick overview of PFM Asset Management. And this is, they serve as the registered investment advisor on the account. And US Bank serves as the discretionary trustee and investment fiduciary. And as I mentioned, this is all, we have this layered in so that these assets and the future assets are all managed properly for your beneficiaries. So we have four investment options, and Dennis is going to speak more in-depth about the growth portfolio, which is what you're in. So we do have four investment options. And of our current members, all but two are in the growth portfolio. Candidly, these are new trusts. They have been around, you know, agencies have been participating for about eight or nine years. So they are in a true growth model. So it's up to the agency which portfolio they'd like to present, put their assets in. The agencies that are participating in the balanced portfolio are doing so because those are closed plans. So these are agencies that the plan is closed, meaning they will not be adding additional retirees in the future. And they're in the process of taking out quarterly dispersments. So they're sort of kind of like short, like stepped down from the growth to the balance because that best fits their needs. We put together just a quick chart of comparisons of returns of the growth and the balanced portfolios in comparison to the PRRIT fund. And this was as August 31, 2024. I do not have access to the September 30 numbers, so we based it on August 31. Year-to-date, the PRRIT fund has returned 8.59%. Peacock Growth Portfolio, which is what you are participating in, has returned 12.04. Peacock Balanced, 10.15. The one-year PRRIT, 12.38. Peacock Growth, 23.59. Peacock Balanced, 16.36. Three-year PRRIT, 5.7, I'm sorry, 4.57. Peacock Growth, 12.57. There is no three-year information for balanced because we did not have anybody in the balanced portfolio three years ago. So we couldn't quantify it. The same for the five-year, whereas the PRRIT fund returned 9.20, and the Peacock portfolio has returned 12.80. So I'm now going to ask Mr. Mullins to stand up. He is actually, is the investment advisor on our portfolio. Treasurer O'Brien is also here to talk about the portfolio, the program in general, as the person he's founding. Any questions on the information I presented prior?
Gentlemen. Can you go back to the screen with the pie graphs? No, that, I'm sorry. Go, well, either one. Which, we're in the growth original, you said?
Yes, you're in the growth original.
Can you go to the next slide? I'm sorry. To the next one?
This one.
Yeah, that one. That Peacock Balanced Portfolio. Which one's that? The balance, it says it's balanced right here on this one here? So that's 61% equity?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to take a few minutes to review the investments in the portfolio. A real quick overview. The growth portfolio that you're in, which was the original portfolio, we started, we just had one investment style. Then we added the others over time, just to give the members more flexibility. As Kate said, pretty much everybody in the program is in the early stages of funding against their OPEB liabilities. So it makes sense that pretty much everybody in the program has a similar investment objective. Very long-term time horizon. Able to overcome losses in the stock market with plenty of time. We're talking about 20-, 30-year horizons. So it makes sense to have a pretty aggressive portfolio. So the growth portfolio is around 75% in stocks. It's about a 75-25-type mix. And again, very much by design. And this follows, we're doing a lot of work with PARZ clients across the country with agencies that are funding against their OPEB liabilities, and almost everybody's in the early stages of that. Very low funded ratio, just getting started, looking for funding sources. Funded ratios, again, in the single digits, just getting going. So it makes sense to have a pretty aggressive investment strategy. As we look down the road, 20-, 30 years from now, a lot of these agencies will be more mature. They'll be looking at paying out a lot of liabilities and pulling money out of these. And we're going to want to de-risk these portfolios at that time. So right now, you're about 75% equities. You can see the chart we're showing here is as of 9/30. You see the total value of the pool. We're approaching $60 million right now, all of the agency's assets combined. For the month, 2% net of all fees. That's a good month. Annualizes to, you know, around 24%. For three months, 6.48. Again, very good quarter. Year-to-date, nine months, 13.91. It's been a really good year in the stock market. We've been seeing the recovery from the losses of 2022, when we had a really bad year. And so for the one year, that's 10/1 of last year to 9/30 of this year, 26% net of all fees. For three years, 5.75, much lower number. And that's per year. Anything over one year is annualized. So 5.75% per year. You know, that's an accumulative return of about 18%. But you can see there the toll that the losses in 2022 made. For five years, 9.31. It's been a really good five-year period. And since inception, almost 10 years, 767. It's been a fantastic decade for stocks. The S&amp;P 500 is up over 12% for the last 10 years, per year. Bonds, on the other hand, if you look down to total fixed income, you see much lower numbers, even though for the one year, 12.64% for bonds. Bonds are only going to give you what they're yielding, plus or minus gains or losses based on interest rate changes. Just ignoring, you know, creditworthiness and defaults and any other activity like that because we invest in mutual funds and ETFs, and we diversify away any individual company risk. So for one year, 12.64. That's about the best number you'll ever see for bonds in a given year. That's because over the last year, interest rates across the curve have been coming down in anticipation of the Fed cutting rates. And when interest rates go down, bond prices go up. So fantastic year for bonds. For three years, 0.47. So you can see, bonds are just about back to even after the declines of 2022. The last three-year period has been very volatile. Big losses in 2022, big recovery since then. For five years, bonds, 2.08%. Pretty low returns. They yielded almost 1%, 1.25% over most of that period. And then in 2022, they lost a bunch of money when interest rates jumped. So the bad news, looking backwards for fixed income, the bond market doesn't look very good over the last three years, five years, and even 10. Looking forward, the picture's a little different. Bonds are now yielding close to 4%. Interest rates are falling. Bonds are actually poised to do much better going forward. So looking at that, you know, we're looking backwards with this in all-time periods. Stocks have done really well. Bonds have done okay recently, but over that long period, not too hot. Looking forward, we think we're going to see a little bit of a reversal there. We think stocks will give us a little less than they have been giving us for the last decade. We think bonds are poised to do a little better. We've got real assets in the portfolio, a very small portion. That's either real estate or global infrastructure funds. And then cash is the last line item across here. I always like to point out the one-year cash return, 5.34%. That's about the highest we've seen in cash returns for decades. So really good year. Good time to be in an aggressive portfolio. You benefited from that. Any questions on the investment returns before I move on?
On your equity side, it says large-cap U.S. equity. What is that? Is that like the S&amp;P 500?
Yeah, so the gray lines there are your returns in this fund. So large-cap U.S. equity is just that. It's going to be large-cap U.S. stocks. We're indexing a big portion of it. We will put in some actively managed funds from time to time, but pretty much indexing. And over the last year or so, it's been indexed almost the entire time. We're starting to put some actively managed funds in the large-cap space right now. Interesting point.
So this growth portfolio is now in a Russell top, this says Russell Top 200 Index and Russell Mid-Cap Index. And now you said just the gray areas?
Yeah, the gray, the gray lines across here are your returns. And the benchmarks are just shown there for comparison. We do use mutual funds and ETFs to build the portfolio. No individual stocks and individual bonds. It's much more cost-effective to use funds. We get much better diversification. And in the industry, we're just not seeing that many people support individual stock and bond research. Overall asset mix of the portfolio, 67% equities, 21.78 fixed. Almost 8% in real assets right now. So add that to the equities, and you're looking at about 75% in the market, 25 in fixed income and cash. Investment grade is 92%, I'm sorry, the fixed income is 92% investment grade, 7.5% junk. The spread right now with junk bonds is about three percentage points over investment grade. Long as the economy doesn't go into a recession, should be a pretty good asset class. Then back to your question on the equities. So we're 60% in the equities, 60% large-cap, 23% developed foreign, almost 10% emerging foreign, and then about 6% small count. Global diversified portfolio. Large-cap stocks have done the best over the last 10 years. Diversification hasn't paid off. Makes the portfolio a little safer just by not having it all concentrated in one quarter of the market. But again, hasn't been additive to returns over the last decade or so as large-cap U.S. stocks have just dominated the global equity markets. Looking through the mutual funds that we hold, you know, top 10 common stock holdings are the top 10 stock holdings in the S&amp;P 500 because we were indexing. Some characteristics in the upper right-hand corner, sector weights and market cap distribution.
That's where that, those top 10 common stock holdings?
These are the top 10 common stock holdings in the entire fund, but they're the top 10 holdings in the S&amp;P 500.
Great top 10.
Yeah, good time to be indexing. And you know, indexing is, we're agnostic when it comes to indexing, whether it's indexing or actively managed. Actively managed funds have a much higher expense ratio. They have a much higher hurdle to overcome. It seems to be getting harder and harder to commit to active management when indexing funds, just year after year, have done very well. So it's difficult to find a market where you want to, you know, give up on indexing. And then here are the actual holdings themselves. Complete transparency here. This is what we held as of 9/30. The, all the large-cap equities are in the Schwab U.S. Large-Cap ETF. For the last year, almost the entire year, that was in the Fidelity S&amp;P 500 Index Fund. And we recently switched because the Schwab fund has a little higher exposure to mid-cap. And so we're basically saying, we think we're going to broaden out. You might have read over the last year or so, the market's really been driven by the magnificent seven, the seven largest stocks out there. It's been a very thin market. We think that market's going to broaden out, and it has been broadening out. So we switched that fund. And mutual funds trade with no commission, which is a really nice feature. It means that there's very little resistance to saying, I think I found a better fund. You can trade out of Fund A and into Fund B at no cost. The funds that we use in this portfolio have no relationship to US Bank or PFM Asset Management. By the way, PFM Asset Management is the institutional asset management arm of US Bank. It's wholly owned. So we're free to change the funds in here. We're not beholden to anyone. We have no revenue share or financial incentive to use anybody's funds in here. We manage for you as a fiduciary, which is a legal standard that requires that all of the decisions we make must be in your best interest. It also prohibits self-dealing. So you can actually see the funds that are in the portfolio here. There's been a lot of change in the funds recently. We think we're at a bit of a market plateau here, and it's an opportunity for us to reposition the portfolio for challenging markets ahead. It's been a great market for the last year and a half. And surprising, if you remember back to early 2023, I'm sorry, early 2024, a lot of very bright people in this industry were calling for a recession and a Fed that would be required to cut interest rates because we were going into a recession. And that didn't happen. First quarter GDP was 1.6. Second quarter GDP was just revised at 3.0. Far cry from a recession. Employment numbers are strong. Consumers are strong. Inflation is trending in the right direction. So even though we've had an inverted yield curve for quite a while, we're just not seeing that recession unfold yet. That could happen in 2025, so we'll have to wait and see.
Mr. Gass. So the top 10 that you previously showed us, was that the Fidelity fund from the past year? And you said you switched to the Schwab fund? So are those top 10 holdings in the Schwab fund?
They are, yeah. Yeah, as of 9/30.
So really no difference between the Fidelity and the Schwab?
Not in the top 10 holdings. Yeah. Yeah, the Schwab fund tracks more than Russell 1000, which is the top 200 plus the Russell 800 mid-cap. The Fidelity 500 Index Fund tracks the S&amp;P 500. Subtle difference. But it gives us our mid-cap exposure in the, in the large-cap fund.
Thank you. Mr. Wood.
Just a question. It sounds like the fundamentals are what they are. But just, could you explain to me and those that are watching at home just sort of the, you know, the safeguards that are in place from the fiduciary standpoint to ensure that, you know, the money's going where it needs to be? Are there multiple people looking at the account? Just, you know, you hear the horror stories of something that goes wrong in people who are managing funds on behalf of municipalities. So if you can just explain to us, you know, in a bridge version of all the
The simple, the simple version is, as your asset manager, as your portfolio manager, I don't actually have access to your portfolio. Meaning I cannot put money into your portfolio or withdraw money out of your portfolio. So if you were to ask for a wire transfer out of this, the segregation of duties as an accountant, you know, we have segregation of duties for that protection. So these duties include my limited access to your portfolio. I can trade in the portfolio, and that's it. The custody side of your portfolio is all handled by US Bank's institutional trust and custody side. So if you were to contact me and say, hey, we need to reimburse ourselves. We need to pull a million dollars out. I would tell you, well, I don't have anything to do with that. I would turn you over to the right people who handle that. So there's that segregation of duties, besides the fact that we're a commercial bank and, you know, we're a co-fiduciary, so we're responsible for these assets. From the asset management side, what that really means from my perspective is we have an affirmative duty to step up if we think you're doing the wrong thing. If you called us up and said, you know, hey, we want to put 25% of our assets in Bitcoin, it's our responsibility to talk you out of that. Or, you know, let's say you wanted to just go with a lot of high-yield investments or something of that nature. We're bound by an investment policy statement, so that's a bit of a stretch of an example. But that's where our fiduciary responsibility comes in. We're the investment experts. It's incumbent upon us to help you navigate the entire process, if that makes sense.
Do you, what happens in a market, if the market gets flushed, right? Like a market crisis, right? So we haven't seen a real recession because of government intervention, but we used to see those swings, right, in the markets? Do you do anything to get out of it before your losses become too dramatic? When you work with a municipality, like if the fund starts dropping, any particular fund drops more than, you know, whatever we do as a stop-loss, 8%, 10%? Do you have that conversation to say, well, we're going to just move everything because things are really starting to get out of control? We want to stop our losses? Or you just let those losses ride? Because you, the way you look at it is, it's a 20- or 30-year plan?
Well, it's the latter of those two. I've been doing this 40 years, and we have never employed stop-loss orders. That's probably something we see a lot more of on the taxable, private client side. But first of all, the overall asset allocation is long-term strategic. So if we're 75-25, and just out of the blue, something happens and the market goes down, say, 20%, the best we can do at that point is view that as a buying opportunity, right? Rebalance the portfolio, reassess all of your models. What's happening? Is there some reason to change that mix? There's probably not going to be a reason to change that mix. We're going to, we're going to want to rebalance the portfolio, which enforces, you know, buying low, right? And maintain that strategic asset allocation. But in practice, stop-loss orders on institutional portfolios, you're going to get stopped out of everything if there's a panic sell-off. And then we're, you know, we're literally left with cash. What are we going to do? Go back and then buy the same things? So for that long-term strategic asset allocation, that's, it's just rebalance, stick to that long-term asset allocation, just like we did in 2020. With big market washout, S&amp;P down 18%, bonds down 11. Stay on that. We stayed right on our targets through that entire year, as difficult as that was. And then two years later, the market's back up above where it was. So as long as we can, as long as we can help to educate everyone, make sure everybody's following that very long-term asset allocation idea, then the key is to stay on it. Good question, though. So far, so good. You know, it's fun to deliver good news. There will be times when the news isn't so rosy. But again, it's a very long-term, 15-, 20-, 30-year horizon. So the stock market's at or near all-time highs right now, just a few days off of them. That means it's made up every loss it's ever had. And it will. The only question is, do we have long enough to wait? It might take two, three, four, or five years. And if it takes that long, you know, do we have that kind of patience? Can we? And with the, with the OPEB time horizon, 20-, 30 years, the assumption is yes, we have time to wait.
I'd actually just add a little color, a little flavor, add a little bit of another viewpoint. Tom O'Brien, Treasurer. I serve as the chairman of the Finance of the Finance Investment Committee. And we'll talk about that a little bit. I think that'll add another level of overview and oversight that you're asking about. First of all, thank you for having us. Jamie, thank you for inviting us in. Jen, thank you very much. And I'm here to congratulate the town because actually you folks have done exceedingly well in joining when you did and coming over and capitalizing on the vision that we started in 2015. As you heard, we created the Plymouth County OPEB Trust in 2015, largely because of boards of selectmen like yourself. They came to me as the county treasurer and said, listen, OPEB is the Wild West. We need an investment opportunity. We don't like the options that are available to us. Can you come up with something perhaps a little different? Perhaps a little better? And I was fortunate enough to meet and interview the folks from PARZ, Public Agency Retirement Services. They had started this concept called the Multi-Employer Trust out in the West Coast. It hadn't yet come to the East Coast. I said, why can't we do that here? They said, you could. I presented it to the Plymouth County Commissioners and said, this is an opportunity for our municipalities to get a better mousetrap, to have a better opportunity to invest, to have a little control over that investment. We'll explain that in a minute. And on January 15, 2015, I like dates I can remember, the Plymouth County Commissioners voted to create the Plymouth County OPEB Trust. What was interesting is I got calls from the county treasurers in Norfolk, Bristol and Bartlesville County. Said, hey, we see what you're doing. Would you allow governmental entities in our counties to join the trust? So at inception, we voted to allow governmental entities in only those four counties to participate in the Plymouth County OPEB Trust. So as we're sitting there on January 15, 2015, we were saying to ourselves, maybe 10 years from now, 2025, we'll have 10 members. Maybe we'll have 15, $20 million in assets under management. But as we sit here and as you heard, we have 34 members and over $55 million in assets under management because of the success of what we put together. So why is it so successful? What makes us different? Well, it's a multi-employed trust and your assets are siloed. So your assets are your assets. But we get the benefit of the consolidated pool to drive down fees. We also get investment professionals that none of us could get individually. With all due respect to U.S. Bank and PFM Asset Management, they wouldn't come and help Plymouth County. Well, you might, maybe if we banked with our million dollars. But when we're putting $55 million collectively on the table, we become a very interesting client to work with. PARZ is just an incredible administrator of this type of a program. They had been doing it out West for a number of years before we brought it to the East Coast. And we get administrative services that are exemplary. There is no other OPEB trust that gets the services we have because of PARZ and what Kate and her team bring to the table. So all of that comes with surprisingly low fees. Because when we created this, I said to Kate and to Dennis, we want to have the lowest fees out there. We want to make sure we're always lower than any other place in the marketplace. And interestingly, when we started, our fees were approximately 51 bps. The Commonwealth at the time, through their fund, was a little over 100 bps. As we drove our fees down by creating more assets under management, the state did the same. They're still behind us significantly. The way we continue to drive down fees is pulling more assets and focusing in on ways to do that by ETFs, mutual funds. You heard that from Dennis. What I really like about the program that we put together is there are no proprietary products. U.S. Bank isn't selling us U.S. Bank products. There are folks out there administering OPEB trusts that oftentimes will have their own products in the investment portfolio. That doesn't happen here. The additional level of oversight to your question that we added is we have a finance committee. That finance committee is made up of our member units. So we have five members that meet quarterly. They're open meetings. Everyone is welcome. And we sit and we quiz Dennis, question Dennis, review what he's presenting to us. So when we have a financial crisis, as we did, and we see a downturn in the market, we're asking that very question. What are we doing? Do we stay the course? Is there an action we should be taking that's more appropriate? And as a result of those conversations, bring the stakeholders to the table. We're very successful in making sure that we don't do something too quickly or do something that is counterproductive to what our long-term goal is. Listen, this is a 20- to 30-year investment vehicle. We've been pretty successful over the first 10 years of this program at creating some significant returns. Your folks have been the beneficiaries of that over the last year or plus. And we just feel that if we continue to stay the course, we will be fully funded in a shorter period of time and be in a position ultimately to use these resources to pay for our retirement health insurance benefits. So we actually believe we've created a better mousetrap. We're pleased that you're a part of that portfolio and we look forward to continuing to provide exemplary performance. I would also note that when you call, Jamie picks up the phone, you get Dennis here, you get Kate here, you get Natalia here, you get me here. I would suggest there aren't a lot of folks that will bring the team whenever you want to review the portfolio. So we're happy to be here and if there are any other questions I can answer, love to do so.
Is that, if all your members, so you said 34, it's about to be 36, I think you said? So are all your members in the growth or are some of your members in the balance?
As you heard earlier, all but two are in the growth. The two that are in the balance are closed end. In other words, they have no more retirees.
Do we, would a single municipality such as a Kushner have the option, if we started to get the jitters about where the market was, would we have the option to say we want our portfolio split 50, balanced 50, growth?
Yes.
And diversify ourselves instead of being in total growth? We have that option to diversify ourselves and say, take 50% of our funds and put it in balance, 50% of our funds would be in growth, say?
Yes.
Hypothetical?
Yes. Now, you would have the professionals that would suggest why that may or may not be a good idea, particularly given the time horizon. In fact, we've seen folks that have contemplated that. We did an analysis, a back trail for them and showed them how that actually would have cost them money, particularly if they had panicked during the pandemic. But the answer to the question is yes. I think as you get closer to fully funded, that's when you really want to have that conversation. It's too early to not be in growth. In fact, I have a running commentary with Dennis. The next time that there's a drop in the stock market, I might take Plymouth County, my smaller portion of this, and put it in aggressive growth. Because I'm trying to compete long-term and make up performance over a long period of time. There's no better place historically to do that than in the equity marketplace. However, we're prudent. We believe we have a very thoughtful progression. But the short answer is that you could do that.
At no cost to you.
Just, it's just a question of diversification, right? I mean, I understand, you know, I'm a stock trader, right? I've been doing it for 35 years, so I know a little bit about this. And, you know, being in these hyper-growth stocks, look, I've made a ton of money and I've lost a ton of money, right? And you can have a great company today and the next day it's bankrupt, right? So just because somebody's technology right now, Nvidia is the hottest thing in AI, right? Doesn't mean tomorrow Broadcom's not going to be. It's one, two of the names that you showed up there on the screen, right? It's going to take its place and knock it right out. So diversification is always good to have and it's not a huge swing in your percentage of return, right? So
It not initially?
17% to 23%. To have a little bit more security, it might make sense at some point down the road, depending on how much, how well you do, right? Two things that'll wipe you off, fear and greed.
You don't want to get involved either. And certainly as you get closer to being fully funded, that's a good conversation. Here's what I suggest. We have quarterly meetings. We want people to come. We invite folks down. Jamie was good enough to come all the way to 44 Aubrey Street and watch our management team. We think you'll be terribly impressed. Here's the other advantage. We have how many professionals at our disposal watching this on a regular basis. So we feel that we'll be able to monitor that pretty well.
How familiar with this bank, U.S. Bank, Great Bank?
Yeah. I like to say that the largest bank you've never heard of.
Well, some, some people have.
Some people have. The other thing I'll just point before I leave and answer any other questions, on page 12, this, it doesn't get highlighted any better than this. If you look at the one-year return through September 30th, and it's the blue part, that's our return. The bottom one, 26.08, is your one-year return net of fees. Look at the number above, 26.28, that's gross of fees. So you're paying 20 bps.
I know, I've seen the numbers.
Remarkably.
So it is a very low fee for the amount of money that we've earned versus the amount of fees that we've paid out. It's been a skew, right?
It is remarkably low and I can't, I don't know of anything east of the Mississippi that competes. And for that, you get all this. I, it just, it's an incredible team we put together. And the fees are just as low as we can possibly get them.
We've been very fortunate. We've been in a great market condition. Most people that I speak to have never been involved in a crash. I've seen many of them. It's not pretty and it takes a long time to recover, right?
It does, yep.
So if you remember this, if you lose 50% of your money, you need to go back up 100% to be break even, right?
Yep, of course. Yep. As Dennis points out, we were very glad because the investment committee met during the pandemic. There were some of us that were suggesting, hey, let's tailor back, let's come back. The professionals said, we don't see this as a long-term situation. We think there'll be a bounce back. I don't know that they could have predicted it to bounce back as quickly as they did. Had we pulled out, we would have missed that bounce back. So it's getting the professional advice from, I think, a team that can bring more information to the table than we could on our own.
How many people are on your team at U.S. Bank when you make decisions for these kind of allocations? Is it just you that makes the decision as a portfolio manager? Or do you have like a whole team of 10 to 15?
We have three overlapping committees. So we have a portfolio construction committee. We have a senior investment committee. Each of those are 15 people. And then we have a group that selects the funds. And as a, I've moved into a role now, it's called senior client, senior institutional client portfolio manager. And so that means I'm not on any of those three committees now. So I just focus on meeting with clients and doing investment reviews, managing the portfolio. But that's a really good question. I, I don't have any questions when I sit down to manage a portfolio and make a trade. There's no question, you know, what I'm supposed to be doing. And kind of back to your question earlier about oversight. I manage the portfolios in compliance with the investment committee and the portfolio construction subcommittee. And if I, if I stray off of that, I start to get notifications very quickly. You know, where are you going? Why are you buying this fund in there? That kind of thing. So it's very tightly controlled. And the idea there is, I work with clients with PARZ on both coasts. And they're managed the same. Everybody gets our best idea. And so you're not paying for my idea of the day. You're paying for our best thinking out of our, you know, out of our home office. PFM is headquartered in Philadelphia. And, you know, again, that's the institutional arm, investment arm of U.S. Bank now.
We'd really love it for you or any member of the board to come to our meetings. I mean, it's an impressive portfolio, but it's an impressive amount of research they do and they present to us. I think you would find it very instructive and helpful and robust.
Thanks, I appreciate that invitation because I never got one before. So I might take you up on it.
Good.
Mr. Jim.
Mr. Kelly.
Just briefly, since you know that I've been impressed with your group and I was in a part of the state that couldn't join it at one point. And when I came down here, we started our discussion. And if someone of the group wants to go over ancient history of where a Kushner was prior to being with you folks and how the returns were small and the fees were large, I think the people in the audience might appreciate that, that this board has put a Kushner in a better place.
I don't know if you have that history?
I don't have the numbers per se.
Good, because we really don't want to talk through them. We're just leaving that, we're all basing them, right?
Yeah, so it sure was a great move. Yeah.
We were with the state prior.
If I could just maybe make some comments about why I believe you're better positioned with PARZ. And Peacock. First of all, the PRIF is a very good fund and I would be foolish if I stood here and said it was not. There is a critical feature that PARZ brings to every account and that is local control. So you have the ability, the question, should we split and go into balance? That is in your local control. And that's a conversation we can have whenever you want it and support you in those choices. And Dennis can provide you guidance. With the PRIF fund, it's 80-20, which is this. It's going to be 80 and it hasn't changed. That's their investment policy statement. So key thing is local control. Fees are significantly higher. We have developed a program that's, fees continue to go down. And that is the PARZ model that's on the administrator side and the investment fees. Because candidly, your assets belong in your account, not ours. So we are very driven to provide the lowest fees and it's constant, constant service and contact working with you. So your returns were what they were. I think you were paying more than you need to in fees and I think you were not getting a team service. And so we really pride ourselves on that.
Your fees, just last question, your fees that you make, is it the better we do, the better you do? Or is it just a stagnant one-set fee? So if we did really bad, then you don't?
Our fees are based strictly on asset under management. So if our asset level goes down because the investments have gone down, we make less money. So our fees go down.
So it's in your, I was trying to do that for the audience at home. The better that you folks perform for us, the better that you're actually making out as well, right?
Yes, but they also, we are a, as our assets increase, our fee level goes down as well.
I want you to, I want you to make as much money as you can because the more you're making, that means the more that this town's making, right? That's the way it works.
Yeah, we pride ourselves. So we are a fee-based service. But we pride ourselves on coming out here and meeting with your board. We're here to support Jennifer and Mr. Kelly. And that's a really driven thing. And I think the key thing is that we have an investment committee that is made up of you all, the members. So next spring, we have elected members. It's every, every year we have. And in June, the position of treasurer will be open. The person who's currently serving in that is going to be retiring. So he will, he's one of our original members on our investment committee. I think the year after that, a member of the governing board position will be open. And we encourage all of our members. We, in May or April, I'll be sending Jennifer a notice, would anybody from your organization like to be nominated for the committee? And we really value that input. And
Who would nominate? Like say one of us three were interested. Who would nominate?
Your governing board would nominate. Jennifer would bring you the form saying this position is open so that you would decide if any of you wanted to serve on the board and you would work through how your nomination process as far goes. You would send us that information about two or three weeks after. We have, it's very measured. Nominations are sent out, requested, due, ballots are sent out. And then you as a group would see the ballot and you would vote. You would see the
Would the nomination only have to be a member of the board of selectmen or could it be an employee? it be an employee?
Well, it's four different positions. So we have, one position represents treasurers of all the different memberships, agencies.
Right now, that's a treasurer from where?
Wareham. And then we have, the next position is an administrative role. So Mr. Kelly's role would be represented, school business officer, superintendent, that role. We have a governing board member. So currently, it's a member of the town council from the town of Waymouth, serves. And then very interestingly, and this is something that Treasurer Ryan insisted on, an employee union representative. So we could, you know, when that position comes up, perhaps a member of the employee force here in Acushnet would want to serve. So different roles are represented on their board.
We have like four unions, so could it be any union?
Could be any.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good night. All right, moving on. Item number two, timekeeping and payroll policy. Gentlemen, you see an updated variation here for a new timekeeping and payroll policy. Assuming you all read through that. If there's any changes or notes you'd like to add, feel free.
This is
This is pretty straightforward.
This is a policy presented to the board for their input. Once the board's input is complete, then we have to give notice to the various unions affected, if any union member is subject to discipline, to give them the opportunity to comment, not the opportunity to vote or approve this, just the opportunity to comment. And then it will come back to the board for a vote.
No vote needed right now?
No vote needed right now. But it's being on the record, presented to the board.
Next up is the board to unions?
Next up is the board to give comments on it. And then once all the comments are collected from the board, then we can send that to the union.
Okay. Good to meet you.
So we don't need another meeting if these gentlemen and myself have comments, we just give them to you, you can adapt, fix it, spread the news between us, let us know if there's any changes, and then you can just send this off to the union without?
Yeah. You don't need another vote from the board, what do you say?
I'll need a vote after the union, whether they comment or not.
Gentlemen, if you do have any questions or comments, please get those to Jake as soon as you can.
Yes, sir.
This is the first step in a number of financial policies that will be presented to the board.
Needs to be done.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm glad to see it's finally come into resolution.
The last time board reviewed policies per finance were 2018.
Yep. All right, next on the agenda, we have a senior tax deferral.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, and we write a first refusal, 1443 Main Street.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gasper.
This is a, this is a sequence of different properties that was, a lodge apostle that was subdivided several years back. This is only a very small apostle of land, and I'd make a motion to forego our rate of first refusal.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, appointment of town accountant, Michael Ellis. Mr. Ellis, please step to the podium, introduce yourself and give us a little brief history.
Sure. Michael Ellis, graduate UMass Dartmouth, 2010. Started as a municipal auditor for a small firm specialized in cities and towns, school districts, the New Bedford landfill. And from there, I pursued an assistant town accountant position with the town of Borne. I grew into acting finance director at times and then finally town accountant for the last six years. Decided to move a little closer to home, seek a new challenge, and saw that Acushnet was looking, met with everybody back in the spring, kind of been a long time coming, and here I am.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Ellis?
I do not, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate your time and effort along with Mr. Kelly's effort to stay in contact with Mr. Ellis. When I was chairman, I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Ellis, and there was a bunch of different moving parts to everybody's puzzle. So I'm glad that the town administrator kept in touch with Mr. Ellis and you were able to get him on board with the town of Acushnet finally. We're in desperate need for a town accountant, so I thank you, Mr. Ellis, for staying in contact with us and staying interested in the town of Acushnet.
Thank you for having me.
Mr. Chairman, just, you know, just a comment. I think for a period of time, we had a really good run of stability in town government, and then it's been a revolving door. You know, I think it's our desire to have as much stability in this department, in our finance department, as we humanly possibly can. Not to say like, hey, you're a professional and you're, I'm sure you've got great aspirations and, you know, somebody may be knocking on your door with a better offer some other town, but we hope that you'll plant your roots here for quite some time. And I think it's incumbent upon us as a board and as a municipality to be flexible, to look for opportunities for personal growth, professional growth. Because I would, if you look at the flow chart, the town administrator and the finance department, those are our two most critical functions, no disrespect to the town administrator, I would argue that the finances trump all departments in town. Because if you don't have your finances squared away, then as a board, we can have the greatest vision in the world for our community, but if we don't have the credibility of the financial component to it, it's all just whiteboard, you know, whatever stuff.
I agree.
Glad to have you on board, look forward to you staying here and helping us grow. Judy, for your role in helping us, and Jennifer. All, anybody associated with the finance department, thank you for hanging, hanging in there with us, and look forward to the next chapter.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it too. Seems like a great team, and ready to get to work.
Awesome.
Ballot sheet, ballot sheet, Mr. Ellis, first things first, right?
Absolutely.
All right, we'll be talking soon, right?
Yep.
I make a motion to appoint Mike Ellis as the town accountant per the memorandum of agreement signed with the U.S. Steelworkers.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
We, you know, Judy and most folks in finance like to stay in the background, but Judy, if you wouldn't mind just standing for a second so we can recognize you and Todd Hassett, who was there before you, we've really been fortunate to have some professionals keep the lights on for us, you know.
Clubhouse committee discussion. Mr. Warner, you asked last meeting that this was on here for discussion.
Yeah, I don't know if clubhouse is the right terminology, but for lack of a better, for lack of a better term, we've all discussed it multiple points since the golf course was opened. You know, some type of facility that, you know, is attractive to the day-to-day golfer, attractive to those who want to do events. The facility that's there now is on its last leg, you know, I know Mr. Gasper has talked about it, you know, Bob, you have talked about it. I just, you know, looking back to 1998 when the course first opened, it was 99 when we actually kicked it off, it's always been the approach of the golf committee and the town to go about it slow and waiting until the golf course was actually paid off before taking on some type of other debt. And, you know, that plan is actually, the building's falling apart and we're paying off, the golf course is going to be paid off, so I think it's time to do that. We've got a golf committee that has a lot on their plate. What I'm proposing is a separate committee to look at the facilities and make a recommendation back to the golf management committee. You know, a schematic, you know, a sketch of that would be a five-person committee, but one member of the golf course management committee to serve as sort of an advisor, ex officio, to, you know, provide institutional knowledge and to guide the group in looking for people who are interested, generally interested in a facility there. It could range, again, room on options. And so that's what I would propose, a very short timeframe to make a recommendation back to the golf management committee, along to the board of selectmen, and then that committee would sunset. But also, it would serve as developing a bench. We, you know, we had regrettably one member of the golf committee pass away, and, you know, not everybody's going to do this every year for the rest of their lives, so I think getting some, you know, new people to look at the course and be part of it, I think would be a good, a good thing. I know we've already had two applicants for the open committee, and I know there's some other folks in town I think would serve, would be a great help to us, so that's my proposal. Up to you guys to tweet and say no, or you, status quo, whatever, but one at least proposed that to the board.
Mr. Gasper?
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with the idea, I don't know whether that, the composition of that committee, selectmen alone is five or seven, and I've talked about this to other people in the past, and you said one member of the existing golf management committee, so when I was thinking things through, I was like, maybe a seven-member committee, two from the current golf committee, a board of selectmen member, a finance committee member, and then three at large would kind of put it all together. You know, however that composition looks of that committee. If the golf committee, if the golf committee's okay with one member serving the clubhouse committee, I'm fine with whatever that is.
And I, and I like that. My only, my only pushback on it is the less of the final decision makers that are involved just putting together the options, I think just provides us with objectivity throughout the process, right? Is that we've got a member of the board of selectmen, two members of the golf committee, I don't want to say
A FinCon.
A FinCon, like we already got a FinCon member there. I think, you know, I'd just, I'd like to see what the group, whether it's five or seven folks in the community who have the background, working with the golf management committee could come up with, I think.
So no member in your eyes of any member from the board of selectmen, only one member from the golf committee, and then four at large?
Well, I would say five at large, one member of the golf committee to serve ex officio, like as an advisor, to help keep things organized and, you know, provide information back and forth. You know, I think that we've done that in the past, I think that would be good, and it just kind of keeps the politics out of it, lets these people cook, come back with a recommendation. We could give them the charge, like once we, you know, we could solicit resumes, the board of selectmen would be the ones making the appointments. And then once we get it all organized, say, this is what we want to see from you all, right? And this is, I think that's where we can provide our input and provide direction to the committee and say you've got 120 days or however long it takes to report back.
I think instead of wasting a committee's time, we have to give that direction.
Yeah, 100%.
Say, you know, this is the maximum we want to be spending, this is what the board's looking for, for square footage of a building, you got to keep it within this dollar amount because there is some creative ways of financing and getting this thing off the books in two or three years, in my opinion. It could easily be done if kept under a million dollars, so.
Yeah.
And we could get it bang, just like that, off the books, and then we can move on to the next big thing for the golf course, right? But we don't want to do any long-term borrowing because we've been telling too many people when the debt's gone, when the debt's gone, when the debt's gone, we could do this, I believe, we could financially do this in a drop of a dime for under a million bucks, there's no reason to be doing it for anything bigger number than that, right?
Yeah.
So as long as we tell them, you know, square footage, whatever that number may be, just artificially speaking, 2,000 square foot, and this is what we have in our mind, what we like to see it look like, go have that and bring something back to the board. But I think we need to put some guidelines in place. So we're not chasing that tail, right? We're not building a $5 million, $3 million building, right?
I could talk, you know, I've talked to some people, say, oh, wouldn't it be amazing if we did something that looked like the New Bedford Country Club, like, you know, like, there's a lot of creative people out there with a lot of creative ideas, but I think at the end of the day, it's going to be our job to report back to the taxpayer on a final product. And, you know, it's one thing I always like, I think with Acushnet, we know who we are, right? We don't like to live beyond our means and we're, you know, we're a small town with, you know, we don't need to be rich and famous, we just want something that's going to get the job done and provide a good product for our residents and those people who visit, so.
We could, we could easily do it and have a payback in less than three years, so we would have no debt we banned for two years, right? So it's real simple how to do this and how to finance this package, but that'll be left for the board of selectmen to make that decision, but I can easily see how we could do it based on the numbers that I know about.
Is five an appropriate number? I think sometimes you go beyond five, it's a little unwieldy.
Sometimes when you have more people in a room, the less, the less you get done, right? So if five's a number and it's going to be just one member of golf management committee and then four at large, let's, let's find out who's interested.
Well, I was saying, if you do a five at large, one from the golf management committee that serves as an advisor.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because again, you don't want the golf manager, the golf member voting on something that they're going to have to vote on, right?
That's fine.
So it's just to provide the institutional knowledge. Mr. Flynn, do you think that that composition would work and make sense?
Yeah, I think so. You don't want it too large and you want people who are interested in seeing this project succeed, so I think five probably would be a good number.
Do you think there's somebody within from the committee that would want to serve in that capacity?
I would think so, definitely.
Okay, great. Well, I would then offer a motion to establish a five-person, I don't want to call it a clubhouse facility, you know, like maybe a golf building.
Golf facilities.
Golf facilities, exploratory committee or study committee or something like that, right? Five-person, one ex officio from the golf management committee, and then we can establish a sunset, you know, we'll come up with an appropriate time as to when, you know, what their, what their charge will be. We can solicit resumes.
Now's the time to do it, it's with the month.
Yeah, like now, like solicit resumes.
Get this thing going, bring back the conversation to the board of selectmen.
Have them in.
Somewhere early spring.
Right, so have resumes in by the, say, November 6th, which is when we're going to meet next, or November 8th, and I think we're trying to get together with a consultant.
By the 19th.
By the 19th?
Yep.
Yes, he's scheduled to come up on the 19th.
So maybe we could make appointments on the 19th, and then we'd have a full team in play. Or we can make appointments ahead of time, this way we'd have the whole, whoever's going to be involved with the golf course would be here for that 19th meeting.
I just, I don't know if the timeframe, only a couple of weeks away to get letters of interest, right? Because we got to go through those letters of interest and make sure that we all agree.
Yeah.
But I think spot on, we need people that have some expertise in building, right? I mean, that's really what you're looking for. You want somebody that knows golf, and you really want people that know construction, right?
Or, you know, hospitality, whatever. Definitely. Like all the, there's a lot of talented people in this town.
We can come up with the dates as we go to, I think, like you said, the most important part is just determining, we got to come up with a name, immediately ask for these letters of interest, put it on any channel we have.
I think he's doing it right now. We're asking right now.
Three weeks, so, you know, give three people three weeks, because I know there's a lot of people already chomping at the bit, I think three weeks is fine.
Yeah.
You know.
Yep.
To get resumes.
Just get it out there, right? People are hearing it now, and if you have an interest in being on a study committee for
November 8th, to get letters in by November 8th, close the business.
To the board of selectmen's office?
That's a Friday.
To the board of selectmen's office, not the golf course, to the board of selectmen's office.
Okay. I made that motion.
That was a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For clarification, what is the name of the committee exactly?
Golf facility.
Golf facilities?
Exploratory committee.
Okay, thank you.
It works.
I think it just shows that like, you know.
Yeah.
Words matter.
Yep. Next on the agenda, golf committee appointment. Gentlemen, you have two resumes that we pushed off until this meeting, from last meeting.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Andrew Corrigan to the golf committee.
Okay.
Andrew's had an abundance of experience out there at the golf course, not only has a work ethic, also has a golfer. He's been dedicated to the town of Acushnet and multiple positions in the town of Acushnet. He's a young man, it's that demographic that we're exploring out, right?
And I would suggest, I mean, Mr. Downing has got a great background as well, and I would suggest that he be first candidate for that exploratory committee.
Correct. All right, so we got a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye. And that motion to appoint
Andrew Corrigan.
Andrew Corrigan to the remainder of the term of Mr. Robert Ferreira.
Next order of business, CPC Historical Commission Representative Appointment. So as you guys know, the CPC is set up where they have sitting housing, sitting planning board, sitting historical commission member that's allowed to be on the board. We have some interest from a historical commission member, Richard Mercier, to be on the community preservation committee, per the recommendations of the historical commission. Is there a motion to appoint Richard Mercier from the historical commission as a representative to the community preservation committee?
So, second.
All those in favor? We have to approve the November 5th state presidential election warrant for Ms. Labonte. We have two consuls of the city, town of Acushnet. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said city or town who are qualified to vote in elections to vote at. From precincts 1 and 2A, Acushnet Elementary School, 800 Middle Road, precinct 2, Acushnet Elementary School, 800 Middle Road, precinct 3, Acushnet Elementary School, 800 Middle Road. On Tuesday, the 5th day of November 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., to cast their votes in the state election for the candidates, along with the presidential office. We're going to motion to approve the November 5th state presidential election warrant.
And so execute.
And so execute.
So, second.
All those in favor? All right, we got some DPW maintenance. We do this every year, first order of business is snowplow contractors. We send out a letter every year to our normal list of contractors, along with inviting others. There are some certain things that they need to adhere to involving insurance and registration. There are some, uh, certain things that they need to adhere to involving insurance and registration and equipment. And just to authorize this, we have, uh, we base the hourly rates off the state rates. The town agrees to add an additional five dollars to each rate, and we're also offering a one-thousand-dollar bonus awarded to each snowplow contractor for each vehicle, as long as they make it to every storm that's called for plowing. All right, is there a motion to approve this letter and send it out?
So moved. As long as it's set in the rate of five dollars above base rate.
Correct.
Right, not the other rates, cause they do all that stuff, so five bucks above the base rate.
Above the base rate.
And it's per vehicle, the thousand-dollar bonus, sign-on bonus, is for perfect attendance per vehicle. We got a little town accounting issue last year on how the motion was done, Mr. Allen. So we're trying to be a little bit more proactive this year and not have to finagle and have everybody wait for money, right? It's, it's our way in Akushnet how we attract snowplow drivers, right? Cause it's getting hotter and hotter to get them here.
Yeah.
So we offer a thousand dollars for perfect attendance, right? So you'll, we'll get a list in from DPW once they get signed up, usually around eighteen, twenty, um, vehicles is what we need, sometimes more. Um, and then we'll do that at the end of the season. And we had a season where there was no snow, and we still paid out the thousand bucks, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
And then, I think last year, we had like one or two very minor storms, and the same thing occurred, but it's our way of securing snowplow drivers, so that we're not losing them mid-year to go somewhere else, right?
Absolutely.
So it's an investment of basically twenty grand that you've guaranteed you're gonna lose, but we could deficit spend snow removal, right?
Exactly.
So, no big deal. It's well worth the twenty grand, half the security.
Yeah, this is shorters.
Cause when your roads aren't plowed, trust me.
Yeah.
We're all gonna hear it.
You got that. So we got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is Eversource reimbursement.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, I move to accept the following payments and funds from Eversource, seventy-four thousand, sixty dollars, and ninety-eight thousand, fifty dollars and fifty cents, as reimbursements for the town's expenses relating to the openings and resurfaces of various town streets and roads, subject to final determination by the board of selectmen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, uh, next item on the list, I actually meant to take this off the agenda, didn't catch it when I was posting this, because I was in my car trying to approve this agenda. Um, I had a couple more questions, I wanted for clarification before we discuss this, but if anybody can enlighten me here, now's the time. Um, I was told it involved something about being closed, is that correct, Mr. Kelly?
Uh, what's happening is the, we wanted to ensure communication when it happens between the treasurer collector's office, where they're accepting payments.
Yep.
And the recycling center. And we've had discussion with the DPW office to make sure the recycling center gets to the DP off, DPW office in sufficient enough time that we, if something's full, we can stop having the treasurer collector's office collect the fee to have it dropped off that weekend.
So this was in regards to mattresses?
Yes.
Okay, so the treasurer's office was notified five minutes after Mr. Thornton, who runs the recycling center with Ms. Thomasack. They were notified five minutes after that happened. So there was no breakdown in communication on this one, other than telling you that somebody told you. I found that out after the fact. It's, by eight fifteen, he knew that it was full. By eight twenty, the treasurer's office knew about it. So I think that the lack of communication was just from that office to this office here. And I don't wanna build a mountain into a molehill if it's not really needed. Um, the discussion I had with, with the DPW after the fact, they were kind of taken aback at why it was on the agenda, and explained to me that, nope, we followed proper procedure, we let the treasurer's office know right away. And it's tough to see that that container is full until it's full, so it's not like they can plan for it. They shut it down, they emptied it, and it's back open. So I don't really see much of an issue on this.
Jim?
Mr. Won.
So, this is actually kind of, uh, fortuitous. I was at the recycling center Saturday, and I had some stuff that I thought would be, could go just general drop-off junk. Turns out it wasn't, and then, oh, you have a check for fifteen bucks. Well, I don't have a checkbook on, I can't remember the last time I even wrote a check. So I was talking to, I think it was Mr. Abreu and Ms. Thomasack about, like, okay, what if we had an onsite way to pay the bill, right? Like, a handheld, where somebody could swipe a card, or a debit card, or something that is more user-friendly, so when the, you know, resident goes to the, finds out they need to have a check.
Yeah.
And I said, does it happen often? He goes, yeah, you're gonna be hon, to be honest with you, it happens a lot. We gotta tell people, I gotta go get a check, we don't take cash, blah, 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 blah. So, you know, if there's a way that we can look into some type of automated payment, you know, whether it's with a, a town-issued cellphone, where you put a square, you know, put some type of, there's gotta be a way to do this, right? And I had a conversation earlier with, with the treasurer about Unipay, because that's been one of my, you know, paying online, paying online. I finally set my account up where I can pay online now, right? But I think that would be a broader discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
To talk to the treasurer about getting every department online, because we, and I met with Unipay representative, we're leaving a lot of functionality on the table that could make life a lot easier for our employees. Um, we're just not taking advantage of it, but I realize, you know, with unions and things like that, you just, we just can't snap our fingers and say, we're gonna start doing this. So I'd ask that we have a broad, a discussion with the finance team to talk about what the fu, you know, what the opportunities are for us to make life eas, life easier, not only for our employees, but for our residents. And this recycling issue could be just one of them, right?
Yep.
Um, I think we, we can get there. It's just a matter of, now that we've got the, the personnel in place.
Sure.
To dig into it, and then come back with a recommendation.
Yep, I would just like to specify, I don't feel comfortable with them accepting cash.
Nice.
That's just my personal.
Exactly, we don't want that.
Yeah.
If it's electronic.
Yeah, it's not, that's not to insult anybody. I just wouldn't wanna give them, have them feel like they have the liability of taking care of that much cash over the weekend.
Hundred percent.
No, no, we don't want cash, but if there's, we've got a debit card, we've got a credit card. We, if we could, if we could look at the Unipay, whatever we're using in here to, to accept credit cards, online payments, right? Um, I think that's the only real route to go, right? So at least then, somebody can go online.
Yep.
And, and go to our website, and go to Unipay, and say, five bucks to get rid of this product, right? And then go, and then it shows a receipt, and then they can just go like, yeah, say, this is my receipt, I just made payment.
Whatever it is.
Good to go, because we, they don't have, we don't have staff to have people running around swiping credit cards. Oh, there's a problem, and it just turns into mayhem. You got twenty, thirty people going in and out of that yacht, I spent a lot of time down there. It's kinda, sometimes it's just mayhem, right? But I do believe if there's an extension to Unipay, where people can go on their phone and just.
Whatever it is.
Just make a simple swipe, and they can sit off to the side and go, okay, I need to pay for it online. Beep, 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 beep. Here's my payment, payment received. They could confirm payment's been received for such item. Now I can take your items, sir, or ma'am.
Whatever it is.
Have a nice day, right? So if that's all we need to do, is an extension off of something that we're already implementing, but we just haven't got the tentacles far enough.
Yes.
Then that's what we need to do, and I think it's a, it's a simple way for those tech-savvy folks.
Yep.
Um, to just go, here you go, is my receipt now, I just paid for it, right?
I think, I think.
And all that.
It has.
It's too bad we, we're not already there, right? So.
No, it's, it's a good thing, cause I've talked, I've spoken to a lot of people that work, and sometimes they can't get to the collector's office to make that payment ahead of time, to bring the ticket down there, so they only have the Saturday to do it. And like, selectmen woman said, not everybody has jack books anymore. It's, it's a different time, so it's definitely worth looking into, so.
I think, I think he, he's already solved the problem, we don't even know, right? Unipay, if it's a town website, they can go on it, activate something and make a payment online. Piece of cake, it's done.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask the treasurer to come in with the finance team?
Yep.
At an upcoming meeting?
Yep.
Talk about that, because, you know, we're just, I think, I throw up our residents. Whenever, whenever the time is right, you know?
Uh, the second meeting in November.
The good, the good news is, winter's coming, and activity slows down, right? So we ain't gonna worry about filling up tractor trailers with mattresses and things of the like. It's the spring through the summer into the fall, it's a disaster, right? There's, the place is hopping.
Everybody's cleaning.
It really is, and we take a lot of stuff for free, metals, cardboard, branches, grass, rock, all that stuff, debris, dirt, and all that stuff. We take for fridges, there's certain things you need to pay for, and then we have a whole list. I think it's online, right, that you need to pay for. So it's not a, it's not a huge problem, but I think, as Mr. Won alluded to, I think that if there's a better way, um, to accommodate residents that are stuck in that position, I think he's already solved the problem, to be honest with you, Unipay.
Yep.
Done.
Cool. All right, so we'll get with, uh, Mr. Kelly, if you can get with Jen. Let's see if there's an easy toggle on in there, we'll go from there.
Hopefully there's an app.
I'm sure there is. Oh, selectmen announcements.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have an overall concern after reading so many articles about cyber attacks. Um, and, and with what everything we're doing in IT, um, I think we need to start having a much broader discussion, a discussion with IT about how do we protect the town's servers and computers and things of the such without being so worried about cyber attacks, right? And that might mean access to certain kind of websites that we just ain't gonna allow anymore from town computers and things of the like, the social media things and things of the like, right? There was a big hack in Providence, a school department, right? Um, the last thing I want is to be is in trouble with a cyber attack and people's personal information getting out, um, to these kind of folks, right? Ransom, we've heard, all heard of ransomware and things of the like with big corporations, um, shutting down power grids in the south and everything else. It's just, the more and more we keep doing the online stuff, the more and more we're opening ourselves up to that kind of, um, problem. So I think we should try to have the IT tech guy come in and talk to the board about, you know, how do we protect ourselves, how do we protect town service, especially with this new fiber link that we have going on around the town? And we're, now we're integrating police department into town hall service and things of the like. We need to, we need to do everything we can to secure the town's digital assets, I'll say, right?
Totally agreeable.
So I, I don't think it's that difficult, and I know that we're, um, the IT Nick's been moving a lot into the AI stuff component of different things, he's been doing a really great job. So, you know, just bring him in, have that conversation, and see what his opinion is on it, and see if we can really get a lockdown on everything we're doing.
Yeah.
Um, as far as, you know, web searches and this.
And we're moving a lot of our, our records to the cloud.
I just don't think that.
Which is even more reason to.
I don't think that we need to have such open access to the internet, right? And he'll be able to tell us a little bit more about that, but I just, I just read and see too many things with cyber problems, right? Um, I think it happened at Delta Airlines not so long ago, right? They were blaming a cyber company.
Yep.
It was their fault, but it's costing corporations tens and hundreds of millions of dollars. I don't wanna be, have the town of Akushnet or any community in the Commonwealth on that outload, but right now, the only one I'm responsible for is the town of Akushnet, so that's why I'm talking about getting the IT guy in here and putting all the safeguards we can in place to, to try to limit the risk of a cyber attack internal.
I agree. Mr. Won, what do you think?
I deserve it.
All right, and I am proud of announcements.
The only, the only thing I wanna say, too, is I know, I know Brad's out at some conference right now, Brad Fish, uh, Veterans Agent, but I do know that he said our Veterans Day celebration, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, November ninth, it's a Saturday morning. It, I believe it'll be the first year, um, that we've ever done a veterans parade.
Parade, correct.
So for those folks at home, I believe it's November ninth, Saturday morning. I don't know what, exactly what time, ten to nine or something.
Yeah, I think meetup is at nine-thirty, kickoff's at ten.
Somewhere around at ten AM, November ninth, we'll be going down from Town Hall. I know I've hooked him up with a couple of, an individual in the army, a, a staff sergeant, that he said he would bring some, some military stuff down here to make the parade a little bit more interesting, and I know Brad's done a phenomenal job. He's got some military trucks coming down for us to have a, a nice parade in the town of Akushnet. Um, so that's just that for that. And I was met with the director of DPW today, and Mike from Pawtucket Asphalt to go over the roads, Nys Lane, Randall Kendrick, Helen Joseph Earl. And it appears that we are on schedule for all those folks at home. We should be on schedule for next Thursday, for Helen Joseph and Earl to put down base, and then Nys Lane will be done, hopefully Friday, for Nys Lane, Randall, and Kendrick.
Excellent.
Keen Road will get done at some point, too. I forgot what Mike had to say, but that's my update on payment as well. So hopefully it's all gonna be done. And just the individual that we met with today, Mike from Pawtucket Asphalt,